And welcome to the State Board of Education Candidates Forum hosted by the Legal Women Voters of the Cincinnati area. The League is a nonpartisan grassroots organization working to protect and expand voting rights and ensure that everyone is represented in our democracy. We empower voters and defend democracy through advocacy, education, and litigation at the local, state, and national level. And my mother would be appalled at my manners. I'm Marcia Futel. And I am the chairperson of the Education Committee for the League. And before we get started, I do want to acknowledge and thank the Forum Planning Team, the Education Committee of our League. If y'all want to just raise your hands, these wonderful people are the ones that have worked so very hard to bring us tonight. And our special friends from School Board School alumni network, and she's right there filming and stuff, my classmate, Nona Landis. School Board School Network is a group of education advocates committed to driving systemic change in public education for all children. So, tonight's forum highlights the State Board of Education, which is responsible for setting policies, directives, and goals for the Ohio Public Schools' education system. The Board has oversight over the Department of Education, and the Board appoints the State Superintendent of Public Education. The candidates we will hear from tonight are vying for the District 4 seat on the Board, which represents both Hamilton and Warren Counties in Ohio. The candidates are current State Board Member Dr. Jenny Kilgore and Ms. Katie Hoffman. Now, tonight's format will not be that of a debate, but as an opportunity for each candidate to respond to our questions based on their platforms and their intent to serve the citizens of Ohio. Our questions were carefully crafted with the voters in mind. Questions that clarify the role and scope of the Board, discusses current education issues and concerns, and allow for each candidate to share their vision for public education for Ohio's children. The candidates will have two minutes each for introduction and for answering each question. Reboot time has not been built into the format. However, I encourage you candidates to respond in a way that best conveys your position on the topics. Our timekeepers tonight are Mrs. Barbara Fleet and Mrs. Sarah Gideonese, right up here in the front, so you all want to pay attention to them. They will give you the one-minute, thirty-second warning, and I will concur with them when they say stop. So, I'm not trying to be rude, but when they say stop, we're gonna stop. Our goal is to have time for Q and A from the audience. Our colleague Leslie Moonie's sitting there in the back. She has index cards for you to write your questions on, and she will collect them along the way. Finally, tonight's forum is being recorded. The recording will be shared on the Legal Women Voters Cincinnati area YouTube channel and on the League's National Voter Information Website, which is vote411.org. The forum is scheduled to end promptly at 8:00 p.m., so we're gonna get started with our introductions from the candidates. And we will begin with Dr. Kilgore. You have two minutes to introduce yourself.
Well, my name's Jenny Kilgore, and I taught for fifteen years at Landmark Christian School Middle School English. And I have been teaching for twenty-four years at Miami University. I teach in the Educational Leadership Department, those young people who aspire to be educators themselves. I have a son and daughter. My husband is in the back there. He's an architect, and my son and daughter both graduated from the school that I taught at, and they went on to attend the Military Academy at West Point, and they're in the military. So, up at the Board, basically, we have several things to do. Main items to attend to were tasked to appoint the Superintendent and to approve the budget. And then the other things are making policy to make legislation more palatable to school districts. Ohio is a local-controlled state, and I protect the local patrol, I'm sorry, local control, not local patrol, local control, and I protect our children and the parents' right to raise their children.
Thank you, Dr. Kilgore. Okay, Ms. Hoffman?
Good evening. I'm a retired teacher after thirty-seven years of teaching. Thirty-five of that has been in the public schools, Cincinnati Public Schools. During my time at Cincinnati Public Schools, I was an active member in the Cincinnati Federation of Teachers, and I held many roles through my time there, both as the Third Vice President in charge of community affairs and also the Chief Bargaining Chair. Worked with many contract negotiations that I found impactful for us. Some of the most important negotiations we did were our win-win, which that was interest-based bargaining, where we had this side and this side. We'd come together to find out what is best for our students. So, that is the history that I have with the Cincinnati Public Schools. But in my time of teaching, I was a leader in many ways. I was asked to be a teacher evaluator, and so I was in classrooms seeing teachers all across our district. I was also a leader of the Fine Arts Curriculum Council, which meant that I fought for the fine arts for all of our students, and we were able to get that in the contract to Cincinnati Public Schools because I felt, and all our community members felt, that fine arts was part of a quality education for all students. And toward the end of my career, I worked on the Race to the Top and Teacher Incentive Fund Grant, which helped us develop the educator standards so that teachers knew what was expected of them. And also, we helped develop the Whole Child Framework. These are two very, very important pieces of work that we did with the Department of Education, and I stand by them because I believe that's what we need for our schools. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. So, our first question has to do with the role of the State School Board. So that we, the voters, are clear. What are the responsibilities of the State School Board in contrast to the local school boards? And we'll start with Dr. Kilgore.
Your local school board is tasked to run the local school. The community is in charge of who's elected on the school board, and the school board should reflect the community values. So, they pick, they hire the teachers, and they pick the textbooks, and they pretty much determine the curriculum of the school. And again, it's supposed to represent the values of the community, local control. The State School Board is a little different. It doesn't really have any local control at all, because that's all delegated to you all. The State Board has two, as I mentioned before, two primary tasks, to choose the Superintendent of Instruction that is over the Department of Education and to approve the budget that is actually delegated by the General Assembly, and that's what we have to work with, thank you, for all the programs. So, we do develop policies to make the legislation palatable to the school districts so that they will adopt it. But in truth, a local-controlled school district can take or not do anything out of the state, but then they determine, they balance whether they are going to forfeit the funds that are connected to that or not. But again, Ohio's got local control, and each community school is one-hundred percent in control of how they educate their children. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Hoffman?
The role of the State Department is very important because the legislature brings legislation to them. And as Dr. Kilgore says, it is their responsibility to make this legislation palatable. And that is, that really includes a lot of working together, and you can't have opposing views. That's why win-win negotiations on those kinds of things are the most important things, to find out their interests, the interests of both sides, so you can come together and make decisions. It's also very important to notice that the State School Board is also responsible for the budget. Well, that's been a concern because this past year, finally, we had a nonpartisan effort to implement the fair school funding formula. However, it was not fully funded, and so therefore, there should have been a further pushback from the State Board, basically saying, hey, you've developed this nonpartisan plan, now let's implement it. But it's very probably very difficult for the State Board to implement that and pushback against the legislature, when they sent out three-hundred-and-ten million dollars this year to charters and vouchers. To me, that is not fiscal responsibility by the State Board of Education, and those kinds of practices need to stop. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We'll move on to our next question, and that has to do with school choice. The Ohio Assembly may vote on a pending backpack bill, which will allow school funding to follow the student to public or non-public schools. If you were given the opportunity to testify to the legislators on this bill, what would you say? And we'll start with Ms. Hoffman.
Well, I am totally opposed to this because I believe that public dollars belong in the public schools. Taking these dollars and putting them into vouchers and charters has not been affected for our children. The data that came out of Stanford University just recently indicated that the children in grades four through six, the African-American, black and brown children, and poor children, performed thirty-two percent worse in charter schools than their counterparts who were white. That's shameful. In high schools, every year that a student has a voucher, their academic progress goes down. So, charters and vouchers have done nothing for our children in Ohio, except suffer. The children come back to the public schools, and we have to pick up the pieces because they have not been taught the things that they need to know. And when they come back, the public schools have to do everything to put their resources behind those kids. And many times when they come back to the schools, the charter schools have already received all of that money that follows that child. And so therefore, the public schools have to fight for these children without any money behind them. So, we have these charters and vouchers. Since they started, twenty-six billion dollars has gone out the door to charters and vouchers with no responsibility or accountability to the public, and that needs to stop. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Kilgore?
We're going to agree to disagree. I do support the voucher system. The state of Ohio has been run for decades by what financially was determined as unconstitutional program. And Patterson came up a couple of years ago with a formula that's been tweaked a little bit to more fairly fund schools. From a taxpayer's perspective, I would expect my public school to be the first best choice for all the parents in my school district. We're funding it. It should represent our values. It should be the best. However, when it is not, I believe it is the parents' responsibility to provide the education for their children, and they should have the choice to take their children to a better place. And this competition will make our public schools stronger and better, and better education with the, thank you, better educate the children. Now, charter schools are heavily regulated. There are quite a few regulations. As a matter of fact, they're more strictly regulated than a public school, especially considering things like seat time and how they're evaluated with a report card. They're heavily regulated. So, I would just end up by saying that in a democratic republic, I believe in a freedom of choice, the public school should be the best choice, and when it's not, the parents should have the option to give their children the best education they can find. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, our next question has to do with academic performance. There has been much concern being expressed by our students' academic performance. How would you respond to the recent decline of test scores among Ohio students? And we'll start with you, Dr. Kilgore.
Academic scores have declined, and the main reason for that was the COVID. We were out, schools were closed for a year, and children were being educated in their living rooms, and parents were looking over their shoulders and seeing what they were being provided or were not being provided, and they were deciding whether they were satisfied or not. The public school is responsible for the educate, well, schools are responsible for the education, but there's been a lack, and the conversation is that I hear up at the Board, is let's get back to the pre-COVID level of education, where I would argue, well, we shouldn't have been as satisfied with the pre-COVID level of education because there is no more important resource or valuable belonging that we own as parents than our children. There is a very, there's discussion about eliminating the third-grade test scores and holding children back in third grade if they don't make a certain readiness level because we all understand, as teachers, we understand that education is developmental. There is quite a bit of push and quite a bit of money. There's a lot of COVID funds, federal funds, that are being implemented in the schools. One is hiring more tutors. One is more programs. A Dyslexia Handbook has been published. So, there are a lot of programs being put in place to help to address this, but really the only thing that can address it is concerned parents looking out for their children and providing the type of education that our future deserves.
Thank you. Ms. Hoffman?
I agree that the pandemic has been very difficult on our children. I have grandchildren, and I've watched what they have gone through. But I'm also going to push back a little on the fact that last year, my granddaughter was in third grade. She was tested to death. Test prep, test prep, test prep, test prep, in order for them to get ready for this standardized test. That's the problem with these results that we're getting. We're looking at a state report card, we're worried about where we're scoring on that, instead of meeting the needs of the individual children. Our children are unique and different, and they cannot be judged by one test alone. And unfortunately, many of our children are. That's where they have to pencil in things, or third graders have to write a paragraph without having any keyboarding skills. We need to put things into our curriculum where children get to show us what they know or are able to do in a different way. We did this a couple of years ago in Cincinnati Public School. We had capstone projects. In each school, there was a winner. Then they presented their capstone projects in front of a team of GE engineers. These children had to design their project, they had to present their project, and it was, and using audiovisual things with that. And at the end of that, the team of engineers chose the winner. This was a young lady who was a special needs student all these years, and she finally had the first time to show what she knew and was able to do in a way that was different than just a test. I know we have to have tests sometimes, but we need to be far more creative on how we're allowing our children to show what they know or are able to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Our next question has to do with curriculum. And the question is, in your opinion, what is the role of K-12 education in exposing students to diverse narratives and perspectives? And we'll begin with Ms. Hoffman.
I think diversity is incredibly important. Children have got to read books, learn about history that shares our history. Now, has our history been wonderful in this country? No. There's a lot of horrible things that have gone on in this country, and we need to take ownership for them, just like in Germany. I taught at a German school for years, and the very first thing those parents did was teach them about the Holocaust because they never wanted it to be repeated again. Well, this is what we need to do. We need to teach honest history. We need to make sure that people know what has been done and how we can come through that and never face that again. But in order for our children to be able to engage in the curriculum, it has to be meaningful. It has to be relevant. And they read a book that, oh, that's about me. I can understand that person. So, I really think diversity is very important. Our students need to see things from a variety of points of view until they are able to make their own determination of what they believe and what they think. I believe in diversity, and I think we should all cherish that.
Thank you very much. Dr. Kilgore?
So, it's curriculum. We should teach our children academic and vocational curriculum because the point of school is to aim our, or arm our children with the skills that it will take to be successful when they graduate out into the world. They should learn good citizenship. They should learn good capitalism, republic. They should learn about our government. They should learn our honest history. I agree with many points that Katie brought out. They should be taught the honest, the good, the bad, and the ugly. They should be able to celebrate what we did right as a nation, and they should be able to not repeat the mistakes that we made because they've learned about them. But basically, the education is to mentor each individual child, and so that they, when they graduate from high school, they can enter into society and contribute in a positive manner and define, they can become defined success in how they define it. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next question, again, kind of on the same topic of diversity, equity, and inclusion. And I'll read my preamble here. In July 2020, the State Board of Education adopted a resolution to condemn racism and advance equity and opportunity for Black students, Indigenous students, and students of color. In October 2021, the Board repealed the resolution and in its place adopted the resolution to promote academic excellence in K-12 education for each Ohio student without prejudice or respect to race, ethnicity, or creed. In your opinion, what do you think should be the role of the State Board in promoting diversity, equity, and inclusion? And we'll start with Dr. Kilgore.
The role of the State Board regarding promoting equity and inclusion. I, well, I think everybody should be included, and each community is different, so to define how a community should look is impossible. We've got six-hundred-and-eleven school districts in the state of Ohio, and each one of them are unique and different. And they should be permitted, they should be given the tools to develop curriculum and to set up programs and to provide an environment for learning for their students that is most appropriate for their students. I was of the group that voted no for Resolution 20 on July 2020 because it was so rife with sexist and racist terms and accusations, and I voted to approve the rewrite on the resolution in the fall of 2021 because it was a much more focused resolution on our main task of providing educational opportunities. And it recognized the fact that we all have something to add. No one should be excluded, and we should all celebrate our differences and our capability to contribute. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Hoffman?
I believe that in order for children to feel safe at school, they must be into a classroom that is welcoming, that is accepting, that is inclusive. Because when they are, and the children in that school are taught that all children are respected, then that is going to be a safe environment for all children. Our children are very unique and different when they come to us, and it doesn't make any difference what their background is, but our children need to know that they are respected. Our teachers are expected to develop classrooms that are welcoming and inclusive so that those children can feel safe. They put in positive behavior supports. Integrated into that is restorative justice, all these things that we need to do with our kids. It's called social-emotional learning, where they are respected where they are. But that also includes the child and the parent working in partnership with the teacher to be successful. And that means that we all have to work together. We all have to respect every single person that's in the community. We have to respect our parents, and that is basically what we all need to do. We need to respect each other where we are, and if we do, we can all feel safe and be successful. Thank you.
Thank you. So, at this point, we're gonna take a little C-Law and pause and allow the candidates to take a sip of water and kind of calm yourselves and, me too. But for those, I know there were several of you who just joined us, I just want to kind of recap where we are. So, again, welcome to this Candidates Forum. We are talking with candidates for the State Board of Education, District 4, that covers Hamilton and Warren Counties. Again, this debate, this is not a debate, this is a forum, so we are allowing the candidates to share their platforms, their opinions, based on the questions that we've asked, and hopefully you all are learning what you need to. We will have a Q and A opportunity at the end. Let's see, you want to stand up so they can see you? So, if you have a question, we may not get to all of them, you know, because we still have more questions for these ladies. But we'll take as many as we can. We're trying not to be repetitive, so if they've already addressed these issues, we will not redress, you know, address them again. And again, we appreciate all of you for coming. We had no idea who to expect. We didn't know how many were coming. We tried to do the RSVP thing and found our links weren't working and all kinds of shenanigans. So, we're just glad you pressed your way forward. Didn't have the nerve. Fall has been very rude this year. So, it showed up with, you know, yes, what were we, eighty degrees a couple of days ago? And now here we are, all bundled up in our Parkers and bubble coats and whatnot. So, again, we thank you all for coming out, and we're gonna resume our questions now. That gave our timers a little bit of a break, too. All right, so we're gonna get back on it. Okay, so, next question. The next question deals with the authority and reach of the State Board. Earlier, I asked you both to distinguish between the role of the State Board from that of the local boards. Recent considerations at the State Board, such as whether to reject new federal Title IX guidelines, questioned the role of the State Board relative to the policies of the federal government. So, the question is, do you believe this Board should pass policies that reject federal guidance? And please explain your answer, and we will start with Ms. Hoffman.
Title IX is very, very important, and we need to make sure that we are in full respect of that law. And in recent months, the Biden administration has encouraged to expand those rights so that our LGBTQ kids could feel very welcomed in buildings instead of marginalized. I saw the Shea Resolution, which I was horrified by the thought of someone from the State School Board suggesting that those children could be marginalized. We chose that they did not have, they could be isolated from the rest of the student population, that they could be denied free and reduced lunch, that they didn't have to use the proper pronouns, and that school districts would say, okay, if you don't want to pass on these Title IX protections for these kids, fine, we'll make sure that you still get your federal funding. That's a crime. That's an absolute crime. These children are children, and they are the most marginalized kids we've had for a long time. They're the ones that are bullied all the time, and we need to really reach out and protect them. So, when a State School Board Member brings a resolution up to the Board that is that evil- that is that evil, we, the public, need to stand up against that.
Thank you.
Some of you in the audience, I'm looking around, you can remember Title IX when, when it was, the inception of Title IX. And basically, Title IX enables women to play the same sports or schools require to offer the same sports that they did for the boys. It gave women a lot of opportunities to play sports and scholarship opportunities, ways to attend college. Now, by watering that down, and it is, Title IX is for women's athletic. To expand the definition will void the impact. If definitions are to be expanded, it should be in a separate bill. This should stay Title IX, women's athletics, and scholarships. Now, the Biden administration has made compliance tethered in with the free school lunch. I think that's egregious. Attaching free school lunch to compliance with Title IX in a local controlled state, I think it's egregious. The Shea Resolution was written to, if a discerning reader will, can tell that it's the same, the Shea Resolution was written to support the General Assembly in their pushback against the federal mandate. So we have no teeth. We don't have a dog in this game, really. We are supporting the General Assembly in its efforts to push back against the free lunch money being tied into compliance with the expansion of the vocabulary in Title IX. And that's how it is.
Thank you.
Our next question, our next question deals with the declining teacher population. We have seen a significant exodus of teachers over the past few years, which was...
Oh, sorry.
That was not your buzzer. Hey, it wasn't my buzzer, I'm sorry. Okay, let me start over. We have seen a significant exodus of teachers over the past few years, which was exacerbated by the COVID pandemic. What role does the state board have in addressing this issue in Ohio? And we'll start with Dr. Kielbauer.
Directly, I don't believe they have any role. However, the Department of Education does a lot of training, sets up a lot of focus groups. They do a lot of data gathering, determine where the issues are. And I think we all know that the displeasure of students in combatant classrooms, if, I'm talking about generally, what was different regarding after COVID from before COVID. A lot of teachers left the profession. So I don't know the exact answer to that. I do know that it is an issue. There's been legislation out of the General Assembly, expanding the, lessening, I should say, the requirements for teachers, especially substitutes. Now, substitute teachers are required to have a high school diploma rather than training. Yeah, I know. So that disarms, that disables them from being effective for the most part. But we're, we're talking about making sure the classrooms are covered and, and they're safe. So I don't think that the board has a role other than advisory. I think the work is done in the department. But most of the legis, we don't legislate. The legislation is done in the General Assembly. So if you wanted input on that, you would contact your state representative, your senator, and the list of senators and representatives on the, both, both houses have education departments. I'm sorry, education committees. And that's, that would be the most effective way to change in that area.
Thank you. Ms. Hoffman?
Being in a classroom for thirty-five years, I know what it's like to be in a public school classroom. I know what it's like to walk into the classroom the very first day and see you have nothing on the walls, you just have chairs and desks, and maybe not even enough chairs and desks for the students that you're going to have. And teachers who have spent a lot of money in education to get the degrees and the advanced degrees that are required for the profession are expected to build that classroom to be a welcoming and inviting place for their students out of their own pockets. This has been going on for years and years and years. And then the teacher salaries are not commensurate with their education that they have. So here, these moms and dads, they need to think about, do I stay home with my children to be a childcare provider for my children when they're little? Or do I need to school, go to school and spend my money there and then have my children not have me with, with them? The cost of childcare for teachers has been astronomical. And so that's a skeptic in our profession. But I think one of the most clear pictures of why teachers are leaving is they are not respected and they are not valued for who they are. These teachers work twenty-four seven, are expected to be on call twenty-four seven. They're expected because it's their avocation to be a teacher. They're expected to do all this because that's what teachers are supposed to do instead of being respected for who they are and the professionals that they are. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next question has to do with the Superintendent of Public Education. As the state board continues its search for a new Superintendent of Public Education for our state, what qualities will you look for when hiring the next state superintendent, should you be elected? And we'll start with Ms. Hoffman.
Well, I think we need to have a superintendent that really cherishes equity and making sure that all of our children in all of our districts across Ohio are going to be represented. We also need to make sure that he stands for a strong curriculum that teaches honest history. Also, someone that, that would be willing to fight and look at the achievement gaps between our poor children and our wealthy children, or our poor districts and our wealthy district, to look at that and how are we going to change that? So there's lots of things that that school board person needs to be. But one of the most important things, they've got to be out there and be a public education advocate. If they're coming in as a voucher advocate or a charter school advocate, then they are not going to be who is going to be speaking for our children and our teachers and our families in Ohio.
Thank you. Dr. Kielbauer?
Well, we were tasked, when Paula D. Maria left as Superintendent last fall, we were tasked to hire a new superintendent. That's one of our two major responsibilities. The committee got together and we took applications. And we discovered that we couldn't find a satisfactory search firm. And we received twenty-seven applications just to ourselves that were very, some of them were very good. And so we vetted them. And it turned out that the one, that, that fell through. And so we are now again looking for search firms to get an adequate number of new applications to hire the most experienced, qualified person that we can find. My vision of a good superintendent is someone who is at the end of his career. He's still got ten, fifteen years of good practice. But he's, he's been a superintendent of all sizes of school districts. He has been involved with the ESCs or the Educational Learning Centers in each county and in each district. He's been principal, he's been teacher, he is a parent, he is a community member, and he has got an intimate knowledge of how education works in Ohio.
Thank you very much. So those are all of our prepared questions. And now I have questions that have come from the audience. Again, candidates, you have two minutes each to answer. And like we said, we'll try not to be repetitive on the questions that have already been asked. So here's the first question from the audience. How does parent choice play out for our most vulnerable students? As parents with substance abuse, disorders, homeless parents, those in foster care, et cetera. How does that parent voice play out for our most vulnerable students? And we will start with Ms. Hoffman.
That's a tough one. I believe that in our most vulnerable communities, many of our black and brown and poor families have been marketed to, to choose to remove their children from the public school environment and get a voucher or take them to a charter school. We have found that it is not successful for most of those students. Probably Elder High School had the most interesting response to the voucher students that they had. They said, we are not equipped to deal with the needs of the children that are coming to us on vouchers. The public school teachers are far better trained to help our children with the needs that they have. In Cincinnati Public, we have developed community learning centers. These community learning centers are in the middle of the community to help the child, to help the family, and to help the community. These are the kinds of supports that families need to have so that their children are successful. Because these folks are dealing in difficult situations, our schools, our public schools are better equipped to help the family because the child having difficulty is just the tip of the iceberg. It could be the entire family that needs resources to make them successful. So I really believe in the community learning central model, learning center model. Unfortunately, Denise Derryhouse really worked very hard on that in our state legislature. It got hijacked at the last minute. But this is something that we have been nationally recognized for in Cincinnati.
Dr. Kielbauer?
Could you read that question again?
I sure can. So the question is, how does parent choice? How does parent choice play out for our most vulnerable students? Parents with substance abuses, disorders, homeless parents, those in foster care, et cetera.
Wow.
Yeah.
That is a good question. So in Ohio, poverty doesn't have a color. We've got our urban poor and we've got our rural poor in a swath along eastern and southern Ohio, Appalachian, which is very high destitute poverty. Parent choice, there's a lot of, actually, in my committee, the, it's a, it's a service providing committee. There's been a lot of talk about food equity, foster systems, and we all know about foster care systems. They're, they're good if you have nothing, but the best thing is to have both parents. Our state has been devastated with the drugs. And we're, as a state, actually, all of us, not just the board, but all of us as human beings are trying to work our way through that and support members of our community and provide for them. There's no easy answer to that. One of them is the egregiousness of the free lunches being connected to Title IX. I mean, they're taking food out of the children's mouth by conforming or compliance to, to that kind of a grant. So, I mean, I don't have an answer. There is no easy answer. It's communities working together. It's, it's government agencies trying to find answers and to, to feed our children. It goes through the Department of Agriculture, Health and Human Services, the Department of Education. Everybody's working together again to try to mitigate. I mean, I don't want to say Band-Aid, I don't want to say patch up because that's not an answer, but to mitigate the situation that's in Ohio.
Thank you.
Perfect. Perfect target.
All right, our next question from the audience. And it reads, along with the decline in test scores, we have seen a rise in attempted suicides, especially in adolescents, and decline in mental health. What can the state board do to help improve the situation? And we'll start with Dr. Kielbauer.
So the responsibility of the state board would be to direct the Department of Education to develop programs that can be initiated in schools, like teacher training, student wellness. Right now, they've got programs where they have health centers in school districts that have multipurpose functions for the community and the school service. I got lost again. Can you repeat that again?
Sure. The question is, what can the state board do to help improve the situation where we're seeing a rise in attempted suicides, especially with adolescents and mental health issues?
Right. Community is the answer to that. Community, parent, two parent families, vast community, tight communities, churches, local organizations, and comfortable, safe environments in schools with compassionate teachers who love their students.
Thank you. Our next question from the audience.
Katie didn't answer.
Oh, I'm sorry. I am so sorry. I'm sorry.
All right, I would have said something.
I knew at one point I was gonna do that, so.
As part of the State Department of Education, there's something called the Whole Child Framework, which I mentioned before. This Whole Child Framework talks about three things that children need to have before they can be successful in school. The first one is they need to be healthy. So food deserts in our communities are difficult. Kids need to be able to see, to hear. They also need to know that they are respected. And if they are respected in the building, then they will feel safe. So kids need to feel safe. And then they need to be supported, supported in whatever way we need. And one of our populations that I worry about so much are LGBTQ students. The attempted suicide rate among that group is forty-two percent. And this is why our schools need to be open and welcoming and respectful of all students. Now, mental health services are available through the schools, through our community partners. And this is why our Community Learning Center model really does work because the partnerships we have with the agencies all around our county really do help. These children need to be identified, they need to, people need to reach out to them, they need to know how to ask for help. And we also need to teach our children in the buildings how to listen to their friends and possibly say, I think this one has a problem, and report it so we can get them the kind of help that we need. But all of our children need to be respected in the building so they are valued.
Thank you. The next question from, from the audience is similar. And it is, how would you, as a school boy, state school boy member, protect gay, trans, and students of diverse backgrounds in their school environment? And we'll start with Ms. Hoffman's.
It's right what I just said. It's the Whole Child Framework, so that every child is respected. Because if, if you do that, it doesn't make any difference whether green, yellow, black, or purple, you know, or where they are. We have to respect all of our students. Even the most difficult kids in our classroom are the ones that need our hug more than anything. We know that at the end of the day, that's what they really need. So, you know, I just love the kids when they come in the room. I have the opportunity, the school I taught in, to be able to teach the children of children that I taught. And so to be able to see that story of one little girl, I used to say, remind me of somebody, remind me of somebody. And one day, her mother was at the door, knock, knock, knock. And I went, oh, my goodness, that's your daughter. And so, you know, respecting all of your students out there, I mean, that's the bottom line. They come to us, we are supposed to cherish them. They're supposed to know that they feel loved and supported, and that's where they will be successful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I totally agree. We should have respect for each of us, each of our individuals, as individuals, we should respect each other, we should respect what everyone brings to the table. We are in an academic environment, so none of this other stuff should matter. We should respect what each of us brings to the table, deal with each other with compassion and care, and pursue a wonderful education or vocational training to prepare our students. So, we've ran on quite a few things.
Thank you. I'm gonna take a little bit of a facilitator's prerogative here, and timekeepers, they're gonna have one minute to respond. So, the question, I think everybody in this room could not disagree with you about what you have said, we do need to be compassionate, we need to be caring, the children need to feel safe and all of that. The question, candidates, how will you, as a school board member, protect gay, trans, and students of colors, student, I'm sorry, students of diverse backgrounds in their school environment? As a state school board member, what will you specifically do? And I'll go back to the order I went, I'll start with you, Ms. Hoffman.
Well, I think we need to go back and maybe clean up that quality resolution and really talk about what that means. Spell it out and say, "This is what's going on in schools, these are the children that we have, and now let's talk about how we can meet the needs of all of those students." And I do believe it is in the realm of the State Board to establish policies that other school districts can look up to and say, "Yes, all of our children are worthy of your respect, and we need to reach out and make sure that these children feel that respect." And I think that that's exactly what our State Board has to do in a policy-making manner.
Thank you. Dr. Kilgore, you have one minute.
Set policy, set by example. We do develop a lot of policy, as I explained earlier, to make what the legislation legislates more palatable, and include in that just respect, respect. And there's a very limited thing that we can do regarding this because that's really, again, not to put this on local control, the blame or the neglect, but it is a local-controlled state. And as communities, we have the power to mitigate the environment in our community. We should not stand for anything less than total respect of our teachers, our students, our community members, our neighbors. And they do do training for teachers and...
Thank you. Our last question from the audience, and you'll have two minutes to answer. That question is, "How should books and other materials be selected and approved for school libraries and classrooms? And what role would the state school board have in this?" And we'll start with Dr. Kilgore.
I taught Littler for fifteen years. I love books, I'm a lifetime reader, I love the classics. I would have every book available for every student. It is the adult's responsibility in an environment to make sure that reading is age-appropriate, the vocabulary, and the topics, the subjects that are addressed. I do not believe in not having books available, but I do believe it is a parent's responsibility to make sure it's age-appropriate for their children. So, in a school library, again, community control, the community values would determine what materials were found in the library. That's determined by your local school board, who is voted upon by your community.
Thank you. Ms. Hoffman?
With my experiences with our school librarians, they go through a very intense training process and to basically build a library in their school. And I believe that those libraries need to be very open with the kinds of information that children can get. They can go and research a topic from many different points of view and come up with their own opinion. I think that that is very important. These librarians are very skilled at making sure that they screen the books for anything that would be inappropriate in those school libraries. Classroom teachers do the exact same thing. School districts do choose a list of literature that teachers can choose from in their classroom, and sometimes teachers even go to the Board and request a book to be used in their classroom. I think that the educators are trained, the school librarians are trained, to know what is the best content for their students and what is age-appropriate for them. So, I really do respect the teacher librarians that I have worked with and the teachers of reading because I think they do a very good job of finding the most appropriate literature for their students. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so at this time, we will give each candidate one minute to make their closing remarks, and we will begin with Ms. Hoffman. One minute, please.
I have been in education for thirty-seven years, and throughout my years, I've had many opportunities. And I really say that my, my time at Cincinnati Federation Teachers has helped me tremendously. They have sent me for training all over the place, but one of the most wonderful things that they sent me to do, they sent me to Washington to work with Hilda Solis, the Secretary of Labor, and Michelle Obama on the support of women in the workplace. And I worked through that, and this is what I really cherish because we have so many women that have challenges now, especially with, you know, childcare and things of that nature. And I really want to continue that work in Ohio to make sure that our teachers are really represented well and respected. Thank you.
Well, again, I'll introduce myself as Dr. Jenny Kilgore, I've got a PhD in Educational Leadership. I ran in my village for council since 2004, and many of those years I was Vice Mayor. I teach at Miami University, those young people who aspire to be teachers, and I've taught in the Grade Wood Department in Indiana Wesleyan, in our Education Department. I'm focused on student success, I'm focused on them getting more than adequate, a great education and vocational training so that they can succeed when they get out into our society and they can contribute in a positive manner. So, I'm all energized, I'm gung ho, I am out there for your children and your grandchildren and the society that they will graduate into, and I would appreciate your vote if you are so inclined on November eight.
Thank you.
This is a pleasure to time people.
All righty, so our timekeepers are having fun up here, they're like, "We don't have to work too hard." So, now, we've come to the end of tonight's forum. On behalf of the League of Women Voters of the Cincinnati area and our planning team, our wonderful school board school alumni members, I want to thank both of you, Dr. Jenny Kilgore, Ms. Katie Hoffman, for participating tonight. This has been a real blessing in a time where it's been very difficult to have this kind of opportunity, the discourse, the opportunity for voters to actually see and hear from you directly and not filter through the media. Yes, I said that. So, it is important, and I hope everybody who came out tonight feels that you got what you needed, you had an opportunity to hear from both of these ladies and their desire to serve us as our representative on the State Board of Education. So, I want to thank you, audience, again, for coming out tonight, for braving the weather, and for those who will be watching this, thanks to Nona. And we appreciate that time, you took time to come out and become knowledgeable about the role of this, of our state school board, which oftentimes doesn't get a lot of press. So, this is a very important role, and the candidates that want to serve in those roles as you make your ballot selection on or before November eighth. So, on your way out, we still have voter guides out there on the table, Leslie's holding that up, that voter guide is our publication every election season where we capture the responses of those who are running for office in that season as well as the issues. So, please, please, please pick up one, read through it, and let it help you make your decision as you go and vote. Also, if you don't have one of those or you know people who need that stuff, you can also access that information on our website, vote411.org. And there's also a handy-dandy little State Board Education handout, information on these ladies, a little bit more information about the State Board of Education on the table as well. So, with that, please be safe out there in those streets and have a blessed evening.